Two. This is study session Tuesday, October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. First up, St. John's Hospital update.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to introduce Mr. West Hoyt, this is the new CEO of St. John Hospital. They're going to give us a briefing about what's going on at St. John's. So, Mr. Hoyt, if you can come up.
Ah, the big, big head of the table.
Yes.
Nice. All right.
Welcome.
Well, thank you all. So, thanks for the opportunity to join you this evening and provide an update on St. John Hospital. It's a privilege and an honor to serve as the hospital for the Leavenworth community. With that, it's a lot of responsibility, and so tonight I just want to give you an update on where we are and some of the things that we've been working on. As we mentioned, as Paul said, I've only been here since May twenty-third, so it has definitely been a very fast-moving summer. Lots of digesting what's going well, what's not going well, but also acclimatizing myself to the community. And I want to tell you thanks to the whole community for such a warm welcome. It's good. I've been away from an Army base, or I'm sorry, post for a long time. I've been down in the south-central part of Kansas near the Wichita market, so I'm used to being around that McConnell Air Force Base stuff for a while. So, we got to re-acclimatize how to speak Army. But I just want to let you know that as a hospital, we're open for business and we're taking patients. I know that's a critical question many people have, but St. John is alive and well, we're taking patients, and we are recovering from COVID, and that's a success story in today's healthcare environment. Like every other healthcare system and hospital in America, we've worried and we've watched our finances and the services we've provided. But be assured, we're holding our own, and we are on a very fine line between profitability and not, but we're still in the black, and we consider that a victory right now, especially when I look at the headlines of some of these major systems that are really struggling and posting billions and dollars of losses over the last year. So, your hospital is alive and well. We're not thriving as much as we used to before, but we'll overcome that like the rest of the economy. You know, our wellness is directly affected by the economy and, you know, inflation and interest rates. And I kind of go through some of the statistics that we're dealing with. Yesterday was one of the first days in a long time that I looked at our inpatient census, and we didn't have a single COVID patient. And so, that's three days in a row that, when you think last week about this time, I had five inpatient COVIDs in the med surg unit, and so, starting on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, it was refreshing to start treating non-COVID patients because those take a real big toll on you, a lot of resources and stress on the staff. So, I'm thankful, but I'm also encouraged by the fact that maybe we're only, we're coming out of this, we're starting to see some normalcy. You know, we're still dealing with the residual effects of COVID, though. Everything from supply chain issues, increased food costs from the cafeteria. It's up and down the entire organization. Just because we're open for business doesn't mean that the resources that we were used to accessing three years ago are still there. A lot of businesses that we used to leverage have closed, both nationally as well as regionally. So, we're having to outsource a lot of things and go to different sources. On a positive note, it's actually helped us reach to more local vendors and things that have elevated in that space and allowed us to partner with them, whereas three years ago, they didn't have really the capacity or the bandwidth to help us. And so, we're encouraged by that. It's helped us look, you know, internally as well as externally within the Leavenworth, Fort Leavenworth, and Lansing community. Besides finances, arguably, our most pressing issue is staffing. It is the primary variable that's holding us back from reopening certain services and the inpatient units. At the height of the summer, we had nineteen contract agency personnel working in our facility, and currently, we're down to eight. This has been a financial strain and concern as it creates a significant turbulence in wages within our permanent workforce. We're not immune. I know many of you have also seen the increased wage pressures. For me, it, you know, just those few months, basically, from the beginning of the year until now, it's been more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of additional salary, you know, impact to us. We're just trying to regulate and get enough nurses and other staff on there. From a labor expense perspective, our labor costs, including the, you know, the wages that we've had to increase since two thousand, per year, year over year, it's increased almost five hundred thousand dollars for getting high-quality staff. And so, you can see how that really starts to bite into your profitability and your contribution margin. And so, I just want folks to know that, you know, we're facing each and every challenge, but it gets tougher. I would have never thought, and this is nothing against our small businesses with restaurants, but competing with Popeyes and others to get quality staff, I never thought I'd ever see that. But we are right now, but we're pushing through it. We're also working on increasing our access to more specialty care. This takes the form of more access to general surgery. We have a new surgeon that's on board who's starting to see GI procedures and scopes. And I know it's been a, we've had a lack of that in the community, and we're getting that. He's doing two clinics a day and procedures once a day. We're also working with Dr. Bettis and his team to start increasing the number of ophthalmics procedures that we have, in particular cataracts. We have a great relationship with them, and they want to ramp up so we can really start humming in the ORs. We're also working with some tele-neuro folks for stroke and other neurological issues, as well as a GYN provider to start doing clinic within the pavilion. We're close to completely reopening our senior behavioral health unit and ICU. Under the leadership of our new director, Michelle Duckstein, who started on August first, it's really begun to turn a corner on the recovery for the senior behavioral health unit. It was forced to close a couple of times early in the year to prevent a COVID outbreak, and it really had a hard time coming out of that, and it's only, and it's been capped at twelve. And normally, that unit has the capacity of thirty. And so, that is a critical need for us when you think about the demographics within Leavenworth County as well as the KC metro area. There's a big need for senior behavioral health. And if you look at the news recently, we had another psychiatric hospital down in Alotha close, and that took with it nineteen beds that are senior behavioral health, so it's going to place more pressure on us. But as of this morning, we were up to seventeen, and we're going to keep pushing, and we anticipate by the end of the month, or at the latest end of November, we'll be up to twenty-four. So, we're slowly getting there, trying to meet that space. So, this past week, like I said, we pushed to twelve, and we'll keep moving. We're also in discussions with some ICU and critical care providers to provide coverage for our ICU so we can reopen it and keep more of those patients in the community. I work closely with the EMS leadership, and we assess what's leaving the community. And part of this, we haven't been able to meet that need just because we haven't had the staff or the providers. What we didn't realize was the impact that it would have on those professionals dealing with COVID. They became very burnt out, and many of them stepped out of being a physician. And so, we're having to overcome that and start looking at other solutions. And that's what's holding us back for the ICU. It's just having someone to be there. And the beauty of COVID is that it forced us to relook, how do we engage providers? And so, ICU is one of those that we found is conducive for remote solutions, having ICU groups that can, you know, use tele-ICU, have all the monitors and everything there. And what you really need is just an advanced practice provider and nurses right there who are actually putting their hands on a patient. And so, we're going to be focusing on that in the next few weeks. The goal is, we're trying to get that reopened, fully staffed and operational no later than one January, which is good for us.
How many beds will that be?
It will be six. It's a six-bed unit. So, that's what we're focusing on. And why isn't important, when I talked with Jamie and them from EMS, he showed me the statistics, and when I teased out what our catchment area would be, basically halfway between here and Parallel Boulevard, we, it's about five hundred something patients that they're evacuating or transporting out of Leavenworth County because of various conditions that I can't treat. I won't be able to capture all those and keep them here. Some of them exceed my capability, exceed Providence. They got to go to KU Med and others just because of that level. But if we can just capture a fraction of that, you think about what that means. And that's just five hundred within six months. You know, give me ten percent or twenty percent of those, that's twenty percent of those patients. You know, we're talking a hundred patients that never have to leave and their family and their support networks here. So, that's why we're focusing on that. We're going to be working, continue to tease that out, and that group that we're dealing with, they have a footprint. They already serve within the KC metro area, and so, we're encouraged by the opportunity to partner with them. And it's been very difficult to recruit and retain ICU nurses. Many of them, they were the hardest, in ways, some ways, the hardest hit with COVID because of the conditions. It's really a pulmonary infection that incapacitates folks, and that's where you go to critical care. And a lot of them, they just left, you know, the workforce. They were tired. We're trying to get some of them back. Some of them are coming back based off of a part-time scenario. But many of them said, they've done a full career. And so, we're going to continue to recruit and engage other resources, and we've been good with that. We've, we're successful in partnering and getting three ICU nurses that came to us from the Philippines. And good grief, man, they are good. They are very good. So, I just want you to be assured that when folks come here, that we know and we're vetting them, and somebody was worried about it, it's like, look, this is a, this is a community that's used to an Army installation who has foreign officers coming from all over the world, so that should, and they were well-received. They're happy to be here, and they've actually been very gracious about this opportunity. And working beside our US nurses have taught them a lot, too, you know, because where they're coming from in Manila, they have, they're coming from what we'd call a tertiary facility, like a KU Med, so they're seeing some pretty significant stuff. Jackie Davis is our interim CNO, but she's also the director over the ICU and med surgeon. So, she's been working diligently to get those units back open and up to capacity. Over the last few weeks, we've had a couple of days where we were at fifteen on the med surg unit, and that's my capacity for fifteen. So, we were happy because people are starting to get care. But it also makes you, you know, out of that fifteen, we had five that were COVID, so you can't quite completely transition. You're still walking that fine line. Our emergency department's doing good. It's under the great leadership of Randy Ensley, and the number of patients they're seeing daily has increased six to eight day over day for a year. On average, they're seeing fifty-five to sixty patients a day, and they're getting most of the patients in and out in a hundred and eighty minutes or less. We've, was very encouraging because about a week ago, out of the blue, we don't get many, we don't get much snail mail that says, "Thank you." But we got one that was addressed from Houston, Texas, and it was a gentleman who was visiting his family here. And he wrote to say he had a, he ended up being an inpatient in our med surg unit, but he came through the ED. And what struck me was how he said, "Look, I live in the Houston metro area, and it will be three and four hours before they come triage me into an ED." He goes, "I was in your ED in five minutes. They had me in a bed, worked me up. I was up the hill in your hospital within an hour. They treated me great." He had great flowing things. He goes, "I wish you were down here in Houston." I was like, "Oh, my goodness. I'm going to frame this thing and post it on Facebook." But we were, because you need those kind of stories that folks think, and he says, you know, "You think that a small-town hospital would not give great care, but I got better care in your facility than I get in my own hospital down in Houston." And so, I was, it was one of those I loved sharing with the team. So, they're doing good, and they're doing fifty-five to sixty patients a day. And the urgent care and primary care clinics are also doing good. Both have seen a significant increase. In fact, we're at a point where I'm going to have to look, and one of the initiatives I'll talk about is, where do I move or relocate the urgent care? Because yesterday, the urgent care hit fifty-two patients, and you think, what does that do? It means that they're not going to the ED, which is the most expensive option. It meant they probably either didn't have a primary care physician or they couldn't get into theirs, and so, they are able to be seen on that day and, you know, taken care of. And you think, it's only been in existence for a couple of years, and that, non-COVID-wise, that was the highest peak that they've ever had. So, now I have to look at, where do I move them so that they can continue to grow? The same problem exists for primary care. We have one physician and two advanced-practice professionals, and they're at the stage where we need to look at adding another family practice doc because they're fully empanelled and they have a full workload every day. So, we're encouraged because folks are getting where they should upfront out of the ED. So, what are we going to work on over the next year? Initiatives, more primary care providers for the primary care clinic. This is important because the urgent care is seeing forty to fifty patients a day, and the primary care clinics are at capacity. We're going to look at relocating the urgent care to a different location, either in the pavilion or preferably somewhere else in town to reach more patients and reduce confusion. We acknowledge that when they come onto the campus and they go to the pavilion, depending on what parking lot they go to, if they walk into ED, we have to, we have to basically triage and make sure they're okay. Because if not, then we worry about MTA violations. We try to steer them upstairs to the urgent care, but that still happens, so we know we need to get rid of that confusion. And one of our preferred courses of action is to move them somewhere else in town where the center of gravity is for those patients that really need them. In thinking through it, you know, our initial thoughts, probably somewhere closer to the base because a large part of the population that we're seeing is really TRICARE patients and base beneficiaries that, after hours, after clinics closed and things like that. We're also working with, we have a collaboration that we're developing with the University of St. Mary, Kansas City Kansas Community College, and the Unified School Districts to develop a healthcare workforce pipeline for the near-term and long-term community benefit. What this shapes out to be is COVID really highlighted the lack of coordination between all the different agencies that develop and create healthcare workers. But when I looked at it, you know, being a new guy, I had to look and see, what are the resources we have? And we have a four-year degree-producing university. We have a community college that produces two-year ADN nurses, medical assistants, LPNs. We have two school systems, and I didn't know when I moved in, but my next-door neighbor right behind me is Mike Roth, who is, he's like, "Sure, I'll be on board." So, I was like, "It's amazing what you can accomplish over a glass of Scotch and a cigar." So, we're going to work on that, and it also comes with potential for grant money. And the goal is, is to push forward the interest in students at the high school level, get them working, and then through scholarships, grants, and, you know, other programs, how do we move them through the pipeline as they grow, both mentally, physically, and intellectually, and create a career pipeline? Right now, it's, you know, we have a lot of folks that become a nurse's aide, then they say, "I'm going to be an LPN and others." But there's no one who is guiding, almost like a counselor, that says, "Here's a career path. If you choose it, here are the resources within Leavenworth that will keep you here." Because we know that if I lose them out of Leavenworth, many times, if they go to metro, they're not coming back. We want to keep them from leaving. And by having a facility that allows them to do all that practical training, we have a university with Sister Diane next door who says, "I got a four-year program. We can do bridges." You know, we got Marsha Irvin who's down there saying, "Here's all..." So, we have it. Now, we're going to flesh it out, and by the middle of November, our goal is to submit for a healthcare development, rural healthcare development grant to help us fund that and start fleshing it out. So, we're encouraged by the collaboration we have. We're also starting to engage community groups and organizations to assess the needs in relationship with S J H. This is important because I, when I got here, I found out, we really haven't been out in the community, find out what does the community need. We have some groups that we haven't touched base with. Why are we not getting the patients that we should? So, you'll start to see some movement on that. We're also working with Kansas Hospital Association and other associations to assess the community leakage patterns, knowing by provider, by specialty, who's going where so we can find out why. What is it that we need to offer that we're not, and what do we need to do to evolve? We're going to work with the different corrections teams to find out what's the appropriate level and the adequate coverage we need for their beneficiaries. We have a significant population here that needs care, but what is it? What does it look like? We're going to focus on that as well. And then, probably the most important thing that I will be spending time on is addressing the community perception and re-establishing trust. And I'll get to kind of why that's important. But here's some things you need to be proud of, and I actually be proud of. We're one of only four hundred and thirty-one out of four thousand five hundred and eighty-six hospitals in the nation to achieve a five-star rating by the Centers for Medicaid Medicare Services. You know, so we're in the top ten percent of all hospitals as far as quality outcomes, patient satisfaction, and access. And I know we probably don't hear much about that, but that is very competitive, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into it. They dig, it's like having somebody dig through all your dirty laundry. And so, most of the hospitals in Kansas are at the three-star level, so we're one of a very few that have achieved five. It's a tremendous responsibility because now we got to maintain it, and the bar is set high. We're also fully joint-commission accredited. Most recently, we had our lab go through the triennial survey for accreditation. They passed with flying colors. They have a book where they go through about six thousand different standards that they have to fulfill, and they found thirteen things that they were deficient on. And so, when you think about that team and what they do, I mean, really, when somebody wants to know what's going wrong, it's going through the lab, and to think that out of six thousand plus, they only had thirteen, and they were easily corrected within a week, I was very proud of that team. And then, we're going, we are financially solvent. We're focused on growth, and we're committed to being the anchor to a community health network. So, in the future, here's what I'm going to ask for your assistance, and that is helping us chart a path for our future. For so long, there were two hospitals in the area, and now, there's only one. The closure of Cushing Hospital occurred during the height of COVID, and we weren't able to fully appreciate what that would mean for the community and our organization itself. Because St. John was in the middle of the throes of treating COVID patients itself. You know, you're in the fight, and there was no way to think, what does the future look like? Because we really are just looking at survival and keeping the doors open. So, it's important that we start exploring, you know, collaboratively with the community. You know, what is our future, and what does it mean to be a sole community hospital in a community that has distinctly different groups and demographics? Somebody asked me, what does that mean? And when I think about it, even if you look at median income, you look at, you know, ethnicity, there are three distinctly different groups between Leavenworth, Fort Leavenworth, and Lansing. And somewhere as a sole community hospital, we've got to be able to meet the needs for all three groups. And so, we're going to start exploring. The exploration would take the form of identifying which and what services we need to provide and in what capacity, who should and would we want to partner with if that's a necessity, and then what's needed to fully recover from COVID and evolve, which, working on trust between the community and the organization is going to be crucial to that. So, that is your update.
Big changes.
Big changes.
How many beds do you have total?
My license is for seventy-eight.
I was thinking seventy-five is what it used to be.
Yeah, and that's probably because, and I walked through and I counted them because I was like, mm, because that means, if I have seventy-eight on my license, I have to have seventy-eight beds by the state. We have seventy-eight beds, and what we, I have some units that have two headwall units in it, but we only have one patient in there, so like med surg, I only have fifteen beds, but I have the ability to add another six. The SBHU is thirty. The ICU has six. Technically, the labor and delivery recovery units closed, but there's another eight beds there.
Sounds good. Is that, yeah, is that a skilled nursing over there?
Skilled nursing's there. It's completely mothballed. In fact, what it's being used for right now is the University of St. Mary. When they come over there, their students use that for training and orientation.
Oh, good. It's good. It's good to hear. I was on the board of Cushing when they closed.
Yeah, it's kind of...
It's good to hear that you're picking up the pieces and...
Well, I still don't know how many pieces there are.
I know. I know.
Yes, sir. Do you have a relationship with either the VA hospital or Munson Health Center out on post? I do. One, I'm a retiree, so I have that access. I do know the hospital clinic commander, both the one that was there and now the one here. I was a few years ahead of them. And I also know the VA director, Rudy Clover. In addition to being the hospital CEO, I also, there's a professional society for healthcare administration called American College for Healthcare Executives, and I serve as the regent for ACHE in Kansas. So, they are all peers women. They serve on the board, so I know them professionally and personally, but yeah. And so, I've been working with Rudy, and one of the things that we're going to want to talk about is, there is talk and thought about closing the emergency room for the VA and what that means for me, because they only get a few each day and each night. And it's not cost-effective, so that's another thing I have to factor in, what that would mean for us, because it's a different demographic and population with different requirements. But yeah, I do have a relationship with...
Good. Thank you.
Yep. Others. I'll be as honest and transparent as I can be. I mean, in a period of a year, it has been a three-million-dollar swing in our budget. And so, that's what we're trying to overcome right now. It's just, there's no extra money. People still sit there coming in, and many of them don't have insurance anymore. And so, that's, when you're a sole provider, you kind of have to absorb that and try to figure out, how do you get funding?
I do, let's see, is it October eleventh? Is there a community health fair? Is that right?
Yes, and that's really led by our urgent care and primary care clinics. And I would ask, if you're able to support that, please do, because one of the things that impacts the community is doing some of those screenings and the education. Many folks don't understand the pros and cons of the different Medicare plans. And they sound good, but there are a lot of catches and nuances and the little fine print, and that's a good time for them to ask questions about what's covered and not covered.
And that's at the, that's Tuesday, October eleventh, the riverfront.
At the riverfront, yes.
At nine to four?
The exact time, I don't know.
I know it starts at nine, but you can just go in and out, from my understanding.
And it's being led by Kathy Darge.
Yeah, Kathy Darge, yeah.
Others, good questions. Anything concerned about, anything, it says, "What do you need to know?" And, I mean, you know...
Not right now, but...
I love it. You know, I, as long as they will have me, and they'll have me. I came back to Kansas by own purpose. I was four years at Fort Riley, and two years I was with that hospital, and I had one in Iraq. And when I retired, we retired out of Italy, and I purposely came back to Kansas because of the people, the values, the climate. Because I'm originally from South Louisiana where it's rain, rain, lots more rain, and lots of bugs, and I had no desire to go back.
Yes, glad to hear.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for the update. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Wesley.
Yeah, that's great. Next step is snow and ice control operation plan review.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is something we do annually, and tonight, it'll be Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works, just going over some of the highlights as we, I guess, prepare for winter weather.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As the city manager mentioned, we do want to give a brief update on our two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three policy. The snow and ice control plan was first actually written in October of nineteen ninety-three, and each year, the plan is reviewed and updated by staff and brought to the commission to review any changes that have been made. The current version you have in your packet is actually got a date on the lower-left corner of October fourth, two thousand twenty-two. As part of the snow plan, snow control meetings are scheduled for October thirteenth of this year, and that'll be with city staff, the school district, the city of Lansing, Leavenworth County, and Fort Leavenworth. And in those meetings, we discuss and coordinate areas of responsibility so we make sure we're all on the same page, and if somebody's having a problem, we can help each other out. We also be meeting with our independent contractors. Each year, we have two contractors. One works kind of the west side of town, one works the east side of town. They're called out mostly for our residential areas if we get a significant snow event that city staff is unable to clear the residential streets. Staff has been prepping all of our equipment the last several weeks, so we're ready for snow. We've had October surprises before. We hope we don't have one this year. But we're prepping our equipment. You'll see them with plows on fairly shortly, and they'll be driving through the fall with the plows on, just familiarizing themselves with the equipment and with the routes that they'll be using. In the plan, there's two main changes for two thousand twenty-two. The first is, and we talked a little bit about it when we approved the salt bid, we'll be applying salt brine on our hills, bridges, and emergency snow routes this year prior to winter events. As salt brine does help prevent the snow from bonding to the street surface. So, it somewhat kind of melts from underneath and makes it much easier to remove. The other item that we're doing differently this year is, in the past, we've always put the plows down when we've had at least two inches of snow. And what that means is we've had people traveling on the snow, packing it down, and that makes it harder to actually remove. And so, this year, weather-dependent, I mean, if they're calling for a dusting, we won't necessarily drop the plows. But if they're calling for a fairly significant snow accumulation, when it starts sticking, we'll start plowing. So, that's a fairly major change from what we've done in the past.
Is that going to require more resources?
No. We're already out. We're treating the hot spots, so the crews are called in. Typically, we go to twelve-hour shifts, usually seven to seven. And so, the crews are there, but like I said, they're treating hot spots, we're just not dropping the blades. And so, this way, we'll drop the blades.
Good. Thanks.
The other item, and I'll let Derek talk to this, we've kind of expanded what we've done with our local schools this year.
Yeah, as most of you know, we started last year with the paint the plow. We reached out to our local school, usually pre-K through six, and asked if they wanted to participate where the kids get to paint whenever they want. As you can see, there's one from our school from last year. Last year, we had four. This year, we reached out, and we have five. So, we keep adding more schools. And this year, on top of painting the plow, they get to name the plow. And then, we're putting the graphic on the side of the truck, and so, the kids can say, they got to not only paint the plow, they got to name it. And that plow and truck will be assigned to the area of the school. Our plan this year is no snow days for the kids, so they can see the plows. They'll like that, but that's our plan. Last year, they really enjoyed it, and we enjoyed it. And we've got, gotten two back from the schools. The other schools have asked, can we have to, like, the middle of... And we've got, gotten two back from the schools, the other schools have asked, can we have to, like, the middle of October to finish with other projects, and so we'll be picking them all up and you'll be seeing them running around town here shortly.
Are you happy to answer any questions, if you may have?
No, it's good.
Yeah, I think that change is gonna do a lot for driving conditions this year, so. About that, that's cool.
Oh, that, yeah, the salt.
I do got one question just for the public, at what temperature the salt is not effective?
You get down to around twenty degrees and you start to lose the effectiveness of salt. Uh, you can add like the salt brine or, uh, mag chloride to it or calcium chloride to it, and it makes it effective to colder temperatures.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, pavement management plan update.
Uh, once again, Brian Faust.
Again, thank you, uh, this evening, we did wanna provide a brief update on our twenty-twenty-three pavement management plan. Um, and the development of our comprehensive plan as we move forward. Uh, we did also wanna share information on several of the more common surface treatments that are used. You've heard us in the past talk about pressure pave or granite seal or micro-surfacing or melan overlay. So we just wanted to provide a kind of information about what those are and some of the other treatments that are out there. Um, development of a comprehensive pavement manage plan is one of the stated goals of the Commission. Um, the twenty-twenty-three streets are in the process of being finalized. Uh, with bidding tentatively scheduled for the end of February. Uh, this also includes upgrades to the parking lot east of City Hall this year. Uh, twenty-twenty-two, or as you know, we're currently working on the library. In twenty-three, we're doing, again, the parking lot to the east of City Hall. Uh, that's to get ready for our twenty-twenty-four one-hundred-year anniversary of our City Hall building. Um, this evening, we have our consultants from Alfred Binisch, Brad and Jared, if you could introduce yourselves, and they will be presenting the update.
Sure, thank you, I'm Brad Johnson, um, project manager for your pavement management projects. Um, it was the same last year, uh, I think the last meeting that we had here, I was unable to attend, I was, had other business to, to, to attend to. And so I think Jared, he's seen his smiling face, so, he's the entertainment tonight, so, uh, yeah, I, I get the boring part. But, um, appreciate the opportunity to be here, um, think we, as Brian said, kinda wanted to walk through the selection process, how we pick streets, you know, that's maybe something that, that is a little, uh, maybe misunderstood. Or people just wonder about how, how streets are selected, we'll kinda go through that. Um, talk a little bit about our level ser- level of service analysis, and then, again, those pavement treatments. What we start with is, you know, the City of Leavenworth has a very robust GIS system, as you all are, are familiar with. And, and that data is really used to help us identify where the, the PCI, the pavement condition index sits for each se- street segment. Um, and so we use that pretty specifically to identify where we think we need to treat, treat roads with what treatment. Um, a pavement management system is really designed to treat the pavements at the right time to maximize the, the useful life of the asset, which is, which is your streets. And so doing it at the right time, on the right streets, for the right price is really how you maximize the, the money that you put into a pavement management plan. And so I'll, I'll kinda go through, we've made a initial run, these, these processes in terms of picking streets are iterative. In other words, we use the data that we have, we share that with city staff, we start focusing in on certain areas. We're actually scheduled to drive some of these streets to check it, just to basically do a check on the data. Here's the streets that we think we wanna treat. The last, last year when we did this, and we went out in the field with Mr. Stephen and Mr. Stewart. So we took some off the list, and we added some to the list, and so it's a little bit iterative, um, in terms of making these selections. We try to group some of these, so we'll have these isolated streets out here on, on their own. And we use those a lot of times as, uh, bid alternates. Um, in case the bids come in really good, we can add these street segments later, um, to the, to the bid package if, if we get good bids. And so these are very preliminary in nature, um, again, we're supposed to drive the streets with your staff here in the next two, within two weeks. Actually, it's a week, two weeks from la- yesterday, um, is when we're scheduled to do that. So we'll be driving these, and these are, again, iterative. You'll see a little bit later, some of these treatment options, there's various PCI ranges that they recommend these treatments on these streets. And so we always start with those recommended PCI ranges when we start looking at these. But it's pretty common for us to add a street that's just under, or one that's just over as we're in a, in a, as we start grouping these projects together. And so right now, we have these projects built into three different categories. The first one is the crack and micro, crack seal and micro surface projects. Um, this is a treatment, I think, that's ongoing right now throughout town, um, from the twenty-twenty-two projects. But, uh, we, we also filter out all the data for any street that's been treated in the last five to seven years, we remove it. We're trying to get to where we're touching all the streets as best we can. We don't wanna be over, you know, re-treating a street that was just done three years ago, obviously. And so we, we use filters within our program and our tool to, to pull those out from consideration, and then we look to group some of those up. And these are just split north half to south half, so, um, again, there's two, two maps for each, each treatment. So the first ones were crack seal and micro surfacing, next is a melan overlay treatment. And again, this is a more intrusive treatment, and we'll talk about kind of the levels of some of those treatments here in a little bit. But these are our preliminary, um, melan overlay projects, again, these are preliminary. We're gonna drive these, these streets here in a couple of weeks to determine which ones of these we wanna advance and continue with, or some that we might put to next year. One of the other things we do is we coordinate with Leavenworth Waterworks. The last thing we wanna do is put a street treatment on a project and then have the water department come and mess it up. And so some of these, some of these projects are some of these areas where Leavenworth Waterworks is gonna do work. We're just saying, look, we'll stay out of there this year because we know you're gonna be doing work there, we'll pick it up next year in next year's program. So we're, we're always interested in coordinating to make sure when we put a treatment down, we minimize the opportunity for that to get tore up for whatever reason. So there's a lot of coordination that goes on with these as well. And then lastly, um, we have the rigid pavement, which is your concrete pavement. And we're gonna, we're gonna attempt to do a, a concrete street or two this year in this year's program as well. This map just shows all the different concrete streets, they're the colored ones that aren't yellow. Um, and, and they're color coordinated by PCI, so we can kinda see where they are. You know, we might, we don't always do the worst PCI ones first, though, because they may not have as much traffic. You know, we, we always try to build into, uh, and Jared will talk about this, a li- this a little bit, relative to level of service. What is the service level, what, what is, what is that service of that roadway providing? You know, we wouldn't treat a, a road that's in front of a residential little cul-de-sac, the same as we do in front of a hospital. And so we give priority to those streets that have higher traffic volumes, higher, higher classification, like arterials and collectors would be more rated higher than residential, but it's still important to get a, a good cross-section of all the different street segments as we're doing our program. So these are, again, are just preliminary, those are some of the things that we use to, um, to, uh, make our selections, our initial selections, and I'll turn it over to Jared here to talk a little bit about the level of service.
Thank you, Brad. So Brad's touched base on some of the items we use when we, um, sort of, I'm gonna call it score for the sake of this conversation, score different roadway segments. Um, so obviously, we've talked about condition, Brad's talked about functional classification. Um, and this is sort of how we've, we've approached this scoring and this level of service evaluation exercise for the city. Now, each little pie piece here is shown as even, but that's not how we put into our tool. Each condition, functionality, essentiality, and operations piece gets a certain weight, and then each item within that, each data point. And by the way, those data points relate to the GIS data that Brian's provided to us, um, each one of those get their own weight. So each one of those colored pieces actually is broken up into multiples, and that's how we weight each roadway segment. Each, each city-owned and maintained parking lot throughout the entire network. So, um, as you can see, it's, it's an iterative process, like Brad mentioned. Um, as we apply the weights and, and we see how each segment is prioritized throughout the whole network, we run, kinda run it through a smell test, you know, does it make sense? Um, have, have certain roadways been performing the way we, we think they've been based on the tool? Um, and are they in the condition that we think they're in? So this level of service approach, um, is something that we'll apply each year with, with additional data, with, you know, updated condition values, updated projects, um, and we'll continue to repeat this process year after year um, to see how it affects the network long-term. Another item, go ahead.
How do you determine what the weights are?
Exactly, so the weights for City of Leavenworth wouldn't be the same for City, City of Lansing. Because each city has its own network that it behaves differently, it's a different age. Um, and part of the iterative process is applying certain weights. So for example, condition might be forty percent, forty percent for one, um, one evaluation. Whereas, you know, if we wanna, um, address perhaps backlog, um, we'd increase condition to a sixty or seventy percent. So we apply different weights, um, we allow the tool to, to run through its process of scoring each, each piece and seeing how that behaves over time. Um, we can also implement funding levels, which is one thing Brian's tasked us with, is at what level and at what percentages for each one of those is the right fit for the City of Leavenworth based on your objectives. Um, cuz those things can change, um, each city wants to have the best roads, the best bridges, they want level of service A for everything, but everyone knows it's not sustainable. Um, money doesn't grow on trees, and unfortunately, you have to find the right fit based on your desired level of service. So it's very much an iterative process, and you have to find what fits, not only for the level of service you're aiming to get, but also the, your, your funding opportunities and, and what you, what you can afford to reach. So that's how we determine each one of those.
Thank you.
There are other categories we're investigating, just adding into this evaluation, like federal funding opportunities and eligibility. Um, really just the required investment for certain street segments, um, like arterials and collectors. So there's many other pieces we're considering including in this evaluation, but this is preliminarily, um, what we're going with on level of service, so.
We've, we've also built into this, this tool the functionality to add some of these things as data becomes available. Cuz not all data's available right now, but, for instance, traffic volumes. It would be really nice to be able to prioritize based on traffic volumes. Um, unfortunately, traffic volumes aren't available for the city network yet. Holistically, um, but we've built functionality into the tool that that can be added very easily. So that's something that we're preparing for, for the future, to be able to, you know, put, put the money where the highest traffic volumes are.
And when I was here last time, you know, we talked conceptually about the asset management approach and how we wanna provide data-driven decision-making to the city. What it also does is our, you know, we, we don't intend for our tool to be a black box. Last thing we wanna do is shove data in, have it spit out an answer with no one knowing how it got there or where it came from. And so, you know, the tool's also designed to provide, um, any user, whether that's Brian's team or any member of the Commission, you know, and, and opportunity to see how a road segment got from point A to its spot in the program. So that's all part of the data dr- uh, data-driven decision-making.
Yeah, one of the other things I think that's, that's pretty exciting is the fact that we're getting new pay PCI data, um, this year. And really for us to, cuz we've built deterioration curves now with our tool, also to, to be able to spot where on the, where on the deterioration curve is this pavement. And so when we get the updated PCI data, we'll be able to, we'll be able to track, to see whether we're on track with what we're estimating that P, that, that, that point on the deterioration curve, um, is. And make sure that we're, we're gonna validate what we think. And so that'll be very important to determine, you know, we've set up multiple deterioration curves for these based on our experience in other municipalities, but every city responds differently, and, and streets respond differently based on how you've, how you built them, how you maintain them, how, you know, so it's, e- every, every city's different. So I think it'll really be some, uh, true-up data for us to look at. Unfortunately, we won't have it for this year's program, but certainly next year, we'll be able to, be able to add that in, yeah.
Brian mentioned, um, earlier in this conversation, you know, what other surface treatments are we investigating for the city? Um, you know, historically, I mean, even programmed this year, you know, you saw crack seal, you saw micro-surfacing, Brian mentioned pressure pave, and you saw melan overlay. Um, but there's some other, um, applications, you see they're on the screen, fog seal, slurry seal, that we've seen other communities use, um, they've had success with, and so we're investigating these as they apply to the city. Um, we're investigating, you know, are there contractors in the area that are familiar?
What's fog seal?
Fog seal is, fog seal, it's not what it sounds like. It's, it's another application for filling surface cracks. Can you expand a bit?
It's really, it's, it's really basically sealing the surface, is all it does, and it's very thin-coated. It's probably the cheapest, um, cheapest, um, surface treatment that you can, that you can provide. It seals up small cracks, problem is, the problem with fog seal is it doesn't really get into the bigger cracks.
Why do they call it fog?
It's just a light misting.
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
Sealant on top.
Yeah, so we're investigating, you know, are contractors in the area familiar with, with some of these, um, these treatments? Do they have the resources available to apply some of these if they made sense for the city? Um, so this is kinda the exercise we've been going through as, as Brian's directed us.
There's a really cool website called roadresources.org, roadresource.org, I think. If I wrote it down properly, I don't know, roadresource.org, all one word. Um, it goes through a lot of, it's not, it doesn't give a comprehensive list, but you can click on surface treatments, and it goes through, hey, here's the recommended PCI ranges for these treatments and stuff. It's really interactive and really educational if you're interested in any of these, any of these treatments. And it talks about different combinations of things, like, for instance, um, we have a crack seal and micro surfacing uh, program in Leavenworth right now that we're, again, I think that the interest there is to try that for a few years and see how the pavements respond. Um, and we might, we might choose to go in a different direction if, if, if the, the data tells us we should. But there's, there's various combinations that you can do, the crack seal, really the value of that is it gets, you're intentional putting the wand of crack seal material right in the crack, and so when you fill it up with these fog seals and these, these things that just go over the top of it, they don't really penetrate down into the crack to seal it up. And the worst enemy of a pavement is moisture. And so if you can seal things up and keep moisture out of, of penetrating in there with freeze thaw cycles and all these things, you'll, your pavements will, will be happier.
So we put together this graphic just to kinda give a, a visual representation of, you know, what applications work based on the condition of the pavement. And also just kind of a, a general idea of, of where these might land in terms of cost. Um, so as you can see, of course, at the very top, full reconstruction, you know, that's something we do when, when roads are in very bad condition. Um, but one point to make is that you'll notice most of these surface treatments are done when the pavement condition is above fifty percent or fifty PCI. And that's because if, once you, when you start letting pavement deteriorate to a certain point, you really start locking yourself in to what, what's available, what can be done. And that's why Brian's been pushing so hard on these surface treatments, is to let's, let's keep roads in good condition for as long as possible. So you're not, you don't have your back up against the wall for full reconstruction, or even melan overlay when things really start to age. So pressure pave is, is, um, relatively new to the industry, um, that's a proprietary thing, I think, you know, Leavenworth, I believe, has used that in the past. But just here, yeah, this is just a, a good graphic to, to keep in the back of your mind of, of when to use certain ones and, and what makes sense. Brad touched base briefly on this one. Uh, this table just, again, outlines the different types, they're on the left, and then which defects each one of these different applications can, is typically targeting. And you'll notice on the far right, you have the combo column. Um, this combo shows, you know, what typically goes well with a certain treatment, treatment. So for example, at the very top, crack seal, you'll see in the combo on the right says micro surfacing. And that's why Brian typically does that, because what crack seal doesn't typically work for, micro surfacing does handle with the other access. And so that's just one reason why you might combo those two, those two applications up. Um, so again, this is just another graphic to kinda keep in the back of your mind and, and refer to, um, in the future if you have questions about, you know, what works well with others and, and what can we use here in the city.
One of the tricky things about mixing and matching these, though, is economies of scale for a contractor. You gotta be careful not to, you don't wanna do, hey, let's, let's try three streets with this and three streets with that. You know, you'll lose a lot of economies of scale, and so you, you almost need to build a program, try it for a little bit, see how you like it, see if it works for your residents. A lot, you know, chip seal is very popular out in the counties and stuff. I, you know, usually, um, urban areas don't particularly care for that, for the, for the loose chips and things. So, again, not, not every, not every treatment type is conducive to, to, uh, an urban environment. But they are out there and they they do have their place and and they they work pretty effectively if done at the right time, on the right street. I think that's all we had, we went through it really fast, but certainly happy to answer any questions you guys had.
Good explanation, I think that's, that makes it easier to understand what you're, what you've been talking about all this time. Yeah, and even that, I'll probably go to that roadresource.orgs. This all really interests me. I know, you know, I got to go out when we first did the pressure pave with some of them, just to watch that being done. I don't know, I just thought it was fascinating.
Yeah, and I guess one other thing I would let you guys know is there will be surveyors out here in the parking lot here the next week or two. Getting, starting to survey for the parking lot replacements, so.
Great.
That is moving forward too.
Great, okay.
Cool deal, thank you gentlemen.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next step, solid waste operations discuss discussion, poly cart program.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, our ongoing poly cart, solid waste discussion hits another one item tonight. As you'll see in the back, we did bring some poly carts if you didn't get to see them before the meeting. Those are the two different sizes, we just wanted to give you a little bit of feel of of the two different, the smaller and the larger one. So what I'm going to do tonight is go through item one, which in our our process was collection approach, hybrid poly carts and new regulations. What we put before you are five sort of subcategories. We'll talk about each one a little bit, and if there's a consensus, we can sort of flesh out the poly cart issue and then continue on to the other ones, the bulky item pickup enforcement approach and trash bags, which we have been working on this whole time as well. So we'll start right in. So the first one, talk about is collection approach, hybrid poly carts and new regulations. Does the city move forward with a poly cart program? The answer based on commission feedback is yes. Adopt the hybrid poly cart program where the residents, and this is what I wanted to talk about this first item. Staff suggests the poly cart, or receive poly cart unless you opt out of the program. The city will continue to pick up trash bags for residents who opt out. The the alternative to that being opt-in in discussions with poly cart manufacturers, many cities have gone this way. If you're going to go this direction, if you're going to retrofit trucks, if if you're going to do this as a, as an improvement to the aesthetic look at the city, safety of the workers, then opting out would yield a much, much larger percentage of residents who would use this program. And so the city would recommend the opt-out. And so residents would get a postcard and they would say, city is going to this program, you will be getting a poly cart. You can choose your size and then if you do not wish to participate in this program, you can, you have to opt out by sending the the postcard back. So first, let's go ahead and have the discussion on that. That's the directions staff would recommend, but certainly it's up to the commission.
And this is just an example from one of the firms that provides poly carts and kind of the mailer they put out.
All right.
People could select what size they wanted. We would only be doing the ninety-five and the sixty-five, but there would be also that that option for them to opt out. Something along these lines, they would select your choice, it would again sixty-five or or ninety-six, or you can opt out. And it's by returning the mailer self-addressed or actually going to the website, people could do that.
So opting out means you're not getting a poly cart at all?
Opt out means you will not be joining the program. Yep, now, we'll get to it a little bit later here. We're gonna allow you to opt in later if you don't want, if you select no and your neighbors have them and you really like that. We're gonna have probably quarterly, the ability to sign up on a quarterly basis. We would hope that people would, people that opted out would eventually do that, but that's how you would do it.
So for people who opt out, right, how long do we keep doing it? We keep giving them the bags, they're never gonna, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Jones are never ever gonna opt in, you know? How long do we do that for them, a year, two years?
Well, so the the direction I think from the commission was that we don't. That if you opt out, you don't get bags, you can, you can come buy them, we'll have a limited amount at City Hall or you can go to Home Depot or the the grocery store, but you don't get to opt out and opt back into the trash bag program. Trash bags go away when the poly carts come in.
Yeah, that's, that's where I hear the concerns.
Yeah.
It would almost be impossible to 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 run dual programs, to know who got what and and to to fully deliver them in that direction.
I agree, you know, I've heard from a lot of people and just even where I'm at, I could be just anywhere and like, hey, you know, what do you think about this? And a lot of people said, you know, they usually don't care either way, but they they like the poly cart idea.
This is going to be changed and it's something that we've done a long time, so it may take a little while.
You know, and we've had a discussion, because I've had a lot of people say, hey, we bring new people to the community and we hope it's not on a trash day, because other communities aren't used to seeing all that. They're like, what is all this trash just laying down? They're used to seeing a poly cart maybe, you know, from other cities. But yeah, surprisingly, I've had a lot of people that are like, hey, and I said, well, there's two different sizes. And I said, we're just going through these discussions, nothing's been set in stone. But I wonder, and I'm just throwing this out there to all of you guys, you know, if you go totally to, you know, poly cart or the other, I don't think we should do half and half, I think it confuses people.
I got yelled at.
Did you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Couple of older folks, you know, resistant to change sometimes. But I was over at Haymarket Square and it was one of the weekends that you had.
A band or?
No, no, along with the the farmer's market, they had a flea market.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it was, it was an older gentleman and his wife, hey, come here, come here, okay. And I went over there and boy, he let into me, listen, what's this about taking away our garbage bags? And you know, and so I stood there and I defended the poly carts, you know, but oh, boy, oh, boy, they didn't like the idea.
They were from both sides.
Yeah, and and then some are like, you know, I don't really care, just tell us what, you know, what you're gonna do and we'll do it.
Yeah, somewhere like that.
Don't confuse us though doing, you know, and then like, what do we, what do we do, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Well, we talked about all the issues we've had and and part of it is, you know, whether or not it's a heavier gauge, you know, heavier mill bag or not.
Yeah.
Trash is is getting out and the whole reason we're doing this is because unsightly trash is lining our streets and different pockets and so.
And animals are getting into it.
And and this is going to contain that way more than what it was before. I think some folks, and this is just a guess, some neighbors will see the carts and they're like, oh, you got a, you got a bigger one than what I was thinking, you know?
Yeah.
And they'll hold, you know, those big ones will hold several, several bags. So I, I mean, I think it's gonna end up accomplishing, you know, and again, what's, what's the ratio of folks that have, you know, how many bags that we distributed that not gotten used? I know.
I could tell you.
You've got some, you know, that are, so.
I've got rolls and rolls.
Oh, man, hey.
Hey, good, there's other people that need it, I know.
There's other people that need them.
We use them like crazy and I gotta go buy more all the time.
So just say, speaking of, they have a poly cart and then they have excessive amount of trash and all the trash will fit in the poly cart. Are they still able to sit there?
Yes.
The bags.
The direction the commission was that it would still accept bags in addition to the poly cart. And then part of the discussion next time we can talk about it was there was the recommendation, I think, from the the committee about the the one box, but then no more loose items, but that there was no restriction also on bags. And because there will be some, most, most of these will be accommodated by the poly carts, but absolutely. And and there's no bag tag, no extra cost, no nothing, that they'd still be able to do.
And that was it, yeah, because people thought like, hey, if they, they see that they have to put it in a poly cart and if they don't, then their trash ain't getting picked up.
Still put out your leaves and your grass is always in the mix.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with poly cart.
Yeah, I I am too, I I think it'd be a good truck.
Did you, were you able to get back there and see him before the meeting?
No.
Afterwards.
Yeah.
They too tall for me.
I see them quite frequently because I go down to visit my daughter, Shawnee. And they use two of them for each household. There's two for each household, one is for recycling and one is for trash, you know, actual garbage. And I get to see those all the time. A question that comes up to me is, you know, okay, yeah, you could put bags on the side. When somebody puts the poly cart out there, you know, when when we give out the poly cart, poly cart has to be secured. You know, they can't pile it all in, so the lid is like this and stuff is basically could fall out of it.
I think you'd see that if there was, if you were, if you were limited to the poly cart, you'd probably see that. But now since you can have a bag next to it, there's no need to, you know, it's like going to the buffet and fitting everything you can into the container.
Yeah, on your small plate, yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's gonna be part of the education process, okay.
In this, yeah, if you look at, man, I don't know, the ninety-five, yeah, it's huge, it's huge.
Yeah, they have a hard time fitting them into, into the space in their garage. That brought up another thought while I was looking at this. You know, are we going to require people put it inside their garage or inside somewhere? Or can it be like just sitting on the side of their house?
Yeah, so we've, we've had that discussion, that'll ultimately be up to the commission. It's done different ways in different communities, behind the front, usually it's behind the front property line of the structure. So you can put it on the side of your house, you could put it in your driveway, you could put it up next to your driveway. And so as we get into the next set of discussions, you know, we'll have to really decide how restricted we want to be. I know in our town in northeast Leavenworth, sometimes there's not as many locations you can put it in.
That's true, and that's what I've heard in the complaint too, that there, there are some people who may not be able to handle the carts or not be able to store them.
Yep.
And they can opt out.
And they can opt out.
Yep.
Yeah, I should have brought, I should have brought the, you know, what the recommendations from the task force, because they went into a lot more detail than what, I mean, we're discussing right now here.
Yeah, these are the, and we'll, we'll fold them into, we'll fold them into that.
Yes, he's here.
And we'll fold those into into the apologies for sure.
Is that gonna be the color also, probably, you think? That, is that gonna be the color of the carts?
No.
So we can actually have whatever, whatever we want.
I'm seeing bright green, I'm like, well, everybody knows, you know.
What that is.
Those residents in another city, it's like, not do that.
Dark blue, dark blue.
We actually have an official sort of a city color with a CMYK values, which are, you know, and so.
Let's do that.
We can go that direction, but certainly show those to the commission, put a city logo on it, we'll put some more information about, you know, where to call if damaged or found or something like that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next bullet is communication and rollout. Communication regarding the poly cop program would be done through various social media platforms, direct mailers, the city's website. Staff would recommend the program start in spring, summer of twenty twenty-three. We would set a date so that we could be clear as many times as we can. We also had the issues with ordering and such. The supplier of the carts could be required to notify residents by mail, so we can do that. We have address list, that that's part of the opt-out program, so you would, you would get that mailer. And so just a robust, nothing necessarily on feedback there, just that, you know, we've started this discussion and we'll put it out every way we can, the newsletter, direct mailers. And so obviously, information is going to be key as this is such a big change to operations at the city level. Poly cart election periods, proposed initial startup of spring, summer twenty twenty-three. Residents would automatically receive their poly cart unless they opt out. Those who initially opt out but later decide could do so on a quarterly or semi-annual basis. I think quarterly is fair. We were thinking semi-annual is a little bit administratively easier to administer, but I think semi-annual is okay. Because people change their minds, especially in the first year. We need it to be at least quarterly because of the lead time on ordering them. If we get a bunch of opt-ins, we we can't keep a ton of inventory on on hand. But if we did that quarterly, I'm not really worried about that. We know the first year is going to be a learning experience and we certainly want to get residents acclimated to it. And so we would, we would keep extra carts on stock, as we mentioned here, one to two percent, so hundred to two hundred carts. Typically used to replace damaged carts or switch out carts for those wanting larger or smaller size. We know there's going to be some of that both ways. I think there's going to be some people who fill it halfway and say, this is just too much. And there's going to be people who say, I should have gotten a larger cart. So within the first year, we'll probably allow that swap out as we're able to. And again, manufacturing time is about two months once an order is placed. So the quarterly or semi-annual timeframe allows us to make that order and get the carts to residents.
I'd, I'd like to see this rolled out before the change in with the military.
Yeah.
In the, in the, right, before June.
They're coming in August.
Well, before June, because we also have internationals coming in then too.
Yeah.
That's true, they come in earlier.
And.
I don't know, can we make it?
And and how do, and how do we, so, so, and with people move in, moving, other people do, moving in and out of rentals and that sort of thing.
It's assigned to the address.
So, so the rentals.
It stays there.
It stays with the rental, okay. And but then we have some rentals that use the big, big carts and other things.
Yeah, some use dumpsters.
Dumpsters.
Yeah, the city picks up trash for three units and under, multifamily. So if you have a four unit, you already have a dumpster probably.
Okay.
So they would not have a, it'd be only the people who receive city trash service. We have a number of apartments that don't have city trash service, because we don't do multifamily.
Okay, basically, it's the people who deliver the trash bags too now, okay.
I, I'm hoping it wouldn't be, it's not something that would become a problem, but you know, six hundred people out there that are in rental, you know, rental homes, you know, single houses, they turn around, they get this thing, let's say they get it in April, May, right? They go, yeah, I'm gonna keep this, you know, I want to get this poly cart, so they toss it, right? And then they move out and, yeah. The people that are moving in, they're gonna get it whether they want it or not.
Yeah, they will have never not had it, so they'll just get used to it.
Yeah, it shouldn't make any difference, yeah.
So, yeah, wouldn't be a problem.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
Purchase cost and delivery of poly cart to truck retrofits, we wanted to just provide you some numbers. I think we've been pretty good with our estimating when we've had the ARPA discussions, we've had these individual discussions with you all. So I think we're within budget, you know, based on some of the allocation we had for ARPA. I think we we set aside seven hundred thousand based on some Brian numbers and I think we can do the poly carts and the truck retrofits under that budget, so we shouldn't need anything. And again, there, you saw some costs on there, we don't anticipate or don't expect to charge residents for this. They will get them for free.
And you guys will probably do this again, but that resin market, something we definitely want to keep our eye on because should soften up some, some things that we're seeing right now, so. If they try to say, oh, your price didn't go up over the last few months, no, I think you actually can drop it some more, so that's what I'm trying to say.
And this, this came in about, probably about two weeks ago, this quote, so, yeah, we'll watch it closely.
Yeah, might be some opportunity.
So just a couple of the sub-points on that, sixty-five gallon size, typical for two to three people in a, in a household. Ninety-five gallon size typical for large families. Staff recordments, no decrease in the monthly fee for those using smaller carts, meaning you don't pay more for the larger cart, you don't pay less for the the smaller cart. You, the cart is part of the program, because there's no limits and you can add bags, it's just what cart is best for you. So there's no, there's no price implication on whichever one you choose. Manufacturers, these are just some information that that Brian and his team assembled. They deliver carts for the city staff to distribute or for residents to pick up. They can deliver carts directly for residents and that's what we would suggest that that they go directly to residents. And then there's a forty-five thousand dollar charge, that would be for all ten thousand carts for assembly and distribution, which I think is well worth the cost. And then truck retrofits are about twelve thousand dollars per truck to to be able to do that, which is pretty good. And then new trucks, obviously, we would spec that out going forward, that they would come with the mechanisms to be able to handle the carts.
So we as residents, would we, could we put our address on there so that if somebody steals it?
We have a barcode, is that correct?
It, it actually has a barcode, so each car is locked into what home, and so if.
Oh, good, okay.
Cool.
Yeah, and they'll be serial numbered.
We, we will have a spreadsheet.
I didn't know if we'd have to write our address on somewhere, like our mailbox.
You'll probably have people doing that anyway.
Well, I'm sure, I mean, it happens.
I mean, because, I mean, it's got a barcode on it. Do you have a barcode reader? I don't, you know, so having an address written on there might make a significant.
Probably, you could probably do it from your cell phone or something, some kind of app.
There's probably an app.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
If it blows away, then you can go retrieve it.
Yeah.
Steal my trash.
Final item was replacement and repair, manufacturer defects addressed by the company supplying carts. It depended on the vendor, but industry standard is a ten-year warranty. And then other types of damage, staff would would be able to do lids and wheels and fees would be charged due to owner, occupant abuse, misuse or neglect. Those are just things that you have to put in the poly cart policy and then make a smart, common sense decisions as as those happen, as we, as we learn. So some of this is administrative in nature, but I wanted the commission and the public to hear all the things that have been considered. But I think we. been considered. Um, but I think we got most of the direction from the commission tonight to start moving forward with the actual polycard program itself.
Yeah.
I appreciate the feedback and the consensus. Um, a, as a reminder, bulky item pickup, you know, most of that was done by the solid waste committee, so there's not, so we'll bring that back to iron out those details as we continue working simultaneously on the polycarts, putting out bids and stuff like that. Um, and also the enforcement approach. Our city attorney is working on some changes to our ordinance language that, that gives some citation authority, some to, to different people that'll come back to as well. So all those are working at the same time. And then the final discussion we'll have to have, and we have to have it somewhat quickly, but not tonight, is, um, if we look at, and we'll, and Mayor, our Commissioner Better, I agree that, you know, as soon as possible, if it's gonna be, if May one's possible, maybe June one, I'm not sure. We'll have to back into that. The discussion is, are we gonna, uh, deliver bags in April or March? That's, that's up to the commission. Um, we'll see where prices are. We'll bring that back to the commission. So we'll have that discussion here, maybe in the next thirty days or so, before that lasts, um, before the polycard system starts. So, um, open the floor to questions, uh, but we did get the direction we needed tonight. I appreciate that.
Um, I just, I mean, we've got the chairman of the, of the task force here. Is there anything, um, Mr. Overby, that you have, that, that you've heard in your task force that affects what we're talking about tonight?
No, not really. Um, do you wanna come up?
Yeah. The task force took a lot, a lot of time doing this. I wanna make sure, I know it's all done now, but I just wanna make sure that we get their input.
You know, the only thing that would concern me is the polycarts were meant to replace the, the trash bags, and then we're spending a million dollars on trash bags, and we just thought that that was, uh, money that could be spent elsewhere. And then, um, as, as, um, as the city goes through year after year, um, the polycards will, will, will grow, not necessarily in popularity, but in necessity. Um, people, people will move. Then that resident gets a polycard. People will die. That resident now gets a polycard. So over time, you're weeding your, 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 your bag people off of the bags and onto the polycard at the end. But one of the main things we didn't wanna do was to burden the public with a big change. And so the hybrid was a good approach to those that wanna move forward, and then those that wanna stay with their bags and who are comfortable, you know, I got my two bags, I'm gonna go out by the curb and put them down. You know, I don't wanna haul a big old polycard behind me. So we were giving people the latitude, um, as, as they see fit, to continue doing what they're doing. And then those that, hey, a polycard, that's easy. I'll just throw my trash in that and wheel it out to the, the curb. And then eventually everybody will have a polycard, we think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did we talk about, um, restrictions on what can be placed in the polycard? I think we said something about glass, sharp items.
Needles and glass, yeah.
Could they go in the polycard, or do they have to be in a, in a, like a box or a bag or something that's labeled sharp items or something?
You might as well stay here.
Well, um, if, if, whatever can fit in the polycard can go in the polycard, unless it's one of those hazardous, um, liquids and things like that, that we, we talk about, you know, that you, you don't wanna end up in the landfill. Um, but glass and sharp objects and things like that can go in the landfill. What we did was, we talked about the box marked sharp objects, because if you're using the bags, you don't want, you know, your, your, refuge engineers going out there and picking up the bag and have, so if you're gonna use bags, then you, then it's recommended that you use the box to put your sharp objects in, broken glass, metal shavings, syringes and things like that. Um, but if you got a polycard...
Put it in there.
Yeah, put it in there. And as long as the lid closes, you're good, because we don't want, you know, animals. We don't want it to rain in there, you know, and that polycard fills up with rain. It's, you know, six, seven hundred, eight hundred pounds, you know, so...
So, but we would wanna, do we wanna place some restrictions on what can be put in the polycard?
We already have restrictions.
I was thinking of things like, well, in the polycards?
No, now with, with putting out trash.
Yeah, with what's in the plastic, yeah. The, the polycards being, you know, a lot tougher. I mean, do we wanna place restrictions on, like, you know, hey, no dead animals? You know, if your cat dies, don't put it in the damn polycard.
No, or, I mean, that's...
It's, no.
I'll say this, if a...
The ASPCA probably wouldn't like it.
If a possum, you know, gets run over in front of my house, I'm gonna go and put it in a plastic bag and throw it in my polycard, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I might, well, you know, some, somebody might have it for dinner, but not me.
I'll tell you, I ask all these things because, you know, I mentioned earlier, my, my daughter lives down in Shoney, and they have the polycards. And they have restrictions. No glass of any kind gets put in a polycard, period. You know, end of story.
Well, we have, we have restrictions already on the, in the ordinances about what can't be thrown away. And then...
Like paint and stuff.
Yeah, like liquids, like, you know, tur- tur- tinder and old, old stuff like that. Um, and that's, and that's already in there. The rest of the stuff can, if it fits in a polycard, we said throw it in a polycard.
Okay.
Now, we have, you know, we have restrictions on tires. We have restrictions on, you know, um, you know, if you have a microwave, maybe you should take it down to the service center, you know, instead of throwing it in the polycard, because a microwave will probably fit in the polycard.
Oh, yeah.
You know, um, construction material. If you have a lot of construction material, you, if it's in a po-, you, what we, what we caution was that you don't want to come off top rope with an elbow, you know, and push all that stuff down, because when the tipper tips it up, if it doesn't slide out, if it, the guys aren't gonna reach up there and pull it out. If it doesn't come out, it gets put back down and put by your curb, you know, and you go, oh, they didn't come pick up my, you know, my trash today. Well, it's stuffed down in there. So we, we caution people not to overload the polycard.
Yeah.
Only took out my trash.
It'll usually take the weight. Um, now, if you're, like, you're digging up your garden and you're throwing the, the, uh, the extra dirt in there, that'll weigh, weigh it down before it max, before it maxes it out. Um, you know, like I said, construction material like bricks, cinder blocks, things like that shouldn't go in the polycard, but I think that's already a, addressed in some areas.
Construction, yeah. Anything construction, we don't think.
This, this really gets down into the weeds kinda thing.
We got down into the weeds.
But because, because of my experience with, I take them out sometimes, my daughter, um, down there, they have to put specific polycards on specific sides of the driveway or specific places, you know, in front of their house.
We only have one type of polycard.
True.
We don't have the recycle.
We're not gonna place any, you know, it must always be on the right side of your property, whatever.
Recycle one, it's probably a recycle one.
I mean, some of them, they do that, and I, I think they do that because of the having two kinds.
Yeah, probably so.
Okay, great.
Want me to ask any more questions?
No, you're good.
I could talk trash all night.
I know.
Oh, listen to him. I could talk trash all night.
Uh, Mr. Kramer, I know you're working through all these elements, and I appreciate you, um, laying it out this way. This is great. Um, the one, I think, number three, the enforcement approach.
Yep.
That's one that kind of bothers me a little bit on how we effectively handle that going forward. I know you guys are brainstorming what that's gonna look like, you know? The initial thought of potentially enabling possibly, you know, somebody from, you know, city staff to be able to write something that they've never been able to do before. It's just an area of caution I've got, I guess, and concern, and just how we figure it out, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they have been, though. I mean, you know, if you got a bunch of sticks out there, they're gonna put a, put a note on there saying, we won't pick this up.
Our discussions have been officers who currently, um, are censured, they're officers of the court, which is our three code enforcement officers who do bring court cases and, and do enforce. But it is worth a discussion when we get there about, um, you know, we wouldn't have it be any of the, the refuse workers. We would have, uh, people who work in the court system and with city codes, um, warning periods and citations and stuff like that. But, yeah, absolutely, uh, I hear you loud and clear.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, great.
That's all, okay.
Thank you again, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Overby.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that ends our study session. We'll go around the bend here. Does, Mr. Kramer, do you have anything? I know, there you go.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. The mayor and I attended a change of command ceremony today. There's a new, uh, three-star general, General Milford Beagle, who is the, uh, uh, now commander of the Comma and Arm Center. So that was a great event today. Um, Thursday afternoon, I'm not gonna share anymore, I'm gonna tease a little bit. We're gonna make an announcement on our social media accounts about a large, uh, grant that the city has received. It's embargoed till Thursday afternoon, um, but you'll see that. It's, um, well over one million dollars of infrastructure, um, surface level infrastructure. I, I won't give any more hints than that, that the city, uh, has achieved. So we're gonna announce that Thursday af- after lunch, um, on social media. Uh, Splash Park last weekend is this weekend. Uh, they need to winterize the lines. Uh, it's the first year doing it, so the, the company's gonna come out and walk us through, uh, winterizing lines and stuff. So get out this weekend. We'll, we'll run it all the way through Sunday night. Probably Monday is when we will, um, winterize for the year. And we do have the, uh, elements in place, so next spring we'll be able to have the, all the elements. Uh, finally, Trails Work up at Havens, uh, is, um, well underway. Um, work on the restroom at Sebby Park's underway and a lot of the streets projects. So, um, that's what I have to report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hinklin?
Hmm, thank you all. For your patience.
Uh, for those that wanna sign up in the Veterans Day Parade, sign up now. Um, do you have the, the email link? Go to Mayor Kamala Leonhart's Facebook page, and she will have the link posted for you to sign up. And God bless you all, and have a great week.
I do know. I have the link on there. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say that any of you that watched The Voice last night, our own, Deisha Renaud, um, she got selected to work with, um, two, well, two of the judges, but she chose Gwen Stefani to work with.
Right.
Um, she was very impressed with her, her voice. She sang, they, they said they, they couldn't figure out there she was, because of the song she chose, whether she was country or jazz or, or both. But she has such a variety of her voice that, um, they were very impressed with her, and especially being only seventeen years old. Um, she sang at, uh, Leavenworth,
Camp Leavenworth, with Penny Black.
With Penny Black. Um, and, um...
Great count.
Um, I said, I wish, you know, I wish we had more people there, because this was in the middle of the afternoon.
Yeah, it was twelve, thirteen.
And we wished, too bad we couldn't have her at night. And, um, I told her uncle, um, you know, James, that, I said, next year, you know, we may not be able to get her because...
Yeah, she'll be, she'll be touring or something, yeah.
But, um, watch for her on, on that show. I think, um, I think it, it's really wonderful that, I mean, she announced right there. I'm from Leavenworth, Kansas.
Yeah, she was proud of that.
Yes.
And I would tell you, besides having a wonderful voice and, and great stage presence, she's also a very sweet lady.
She is.
She, you know, she's very, you know, lots of manners, and she's really a pleasure to talk to.
Very appreciative, yes.[1747.84]